If known, the timer and lights indicate the time you have to speak. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. And we have 19 speakers today. So first up is Lori Powell, followed by John Clareenbach. Good evening, councilors and city staff. My name is Lori Powell. I live in Eugene in Ward One. And I'm here with 350 Eugene concerning the Climate Recovery Ordinance. I'd like to make a few comments in response to what I heard during the Transportation System Plan work session earlier this evening. It's always so helpful to get to listen in on those conversations. First, the definition of ordinance from Webster's. An authoritative decree or direction, a law set forth by a governmental authority, specifically a municipal regulation. So I hope that just because the word "goal" is the term used in the Climate Recovery Ordinance to describe the targets needed to comply with the CRO, that we don't get into a game of semantics and say, well, is the CRO really just about a goal? Or is it really a law? This is part of this discussion I heard earlier. And of course, the CRO is a law. There is no equivocation about it. And I can assure you that any attempt to dilute the meaning of this, to amend it, will be met with fierce resistance. Changing course here a little bit, I just want to say how much I appreciate the hard work that Rob Interfield and his staff have put into the Transportation System Plan work that they've done this year. This enthusiasm and the hard, detailed work around alternative transportation is palpable and inspiring. And yet, I wholeheartedly support Councilors Clark, Semple, and Zelenka for persisting and asking for more specifics on how to address the fact that the current plan is not going to meet the goals of the Climate Recovery Ordinance. So thank you for that advocacy. And on another climate-related topic, I'm encouraged to hear that there will be at least two opportunities for council to learn about and weigh in on plans to renegotiate the franchise agreement with Northwest Natural Gas this fall and to work with the Sustainability Commission on this effort. Finding legal options for the regulation and phase-out of natural gas use here in Eugene using the franchise agreement is an excellent strategy for working toward meeting the letter of the law of the Climate Recovery Ordinance. And finally, this weekend, hundreds of your constituents across wards signed petitions at the local RISE rally for climate, rallies that took place all over the world. Ours took place here in Eugene at the Campbell Senior Center. Included in the petition that they signed was support for renegotiating the franchise agreement. So thank you so much for your efforts in that regard. Good evening.
Thank you. John Clareenbach, followed by Jerry Smith.
Good evening, councilors. I'm John Clareenbach. My wife and I own a rental on Mel Street at 1225. And we've owned it since the 1980s. We've had a large increase in the last few years of homeless people in our area. And I understand there's a broad spectrum to address in the homeless area. And I don't want to just make blanket statements about the homeless people. But we have a tremendous problem on our street with trespassing, property damage. I recently go down there two to three times a day and talk to our tenants, help them, ask politely for the people to leave the porch that we have on our facility, also the steps. A lot of times, they come home, they have to walk over people that are sleeping not only on the sidewalks, but also on our property and across the street. There's an 85-year-old lady that lives in a residence there, has been there forever. And she basically is terrified to come out of her house. So I guess what we'd like to see, if possible, would be some type of work that we could all pitch in on to alleviate some of the problems that we have down there. Some of it is facilitated by the proximity of the Whitebird Clinic, which is basically located kitty-corner to our street, just around the block. And I understand the work they do. I have no criticism of that. I think they help a lot of people. But it is possibly not the best position to have that facility in, in the middle of rural, or not rural, but a residential area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jerry Smith, followed by David Igle. Igle, thank you.
I'm Jerry Smith, a retired social worker. And I've lived in Betty Taylor's district since 2001. The bottom of the American economy is infinitely broken. Measures of unemployment are so antiquated that they don't reflect our citizens who are left out of a job market. Welfare is gone. There is no safety net. Social Security and SSI are refusing to help millions of Americans in abject poverty. Eugene is not unique in having crowds of homeless citizens. The funding for nonprofits who help us is so little that they can't keep up with the need. Waiting lists are very long. SSI is way below the local rental market. So our streets are filled with broke and abandoned Americans who have no shelter and very little care. Our police aren't social workers, and they shouldn't be. We've defunded social work in the state, and there aren't enough. On Friday, our new police chief, Chris Skinner, told City Club, "Give us a big new shelter. Give us a place for people to legally camp." And I just bring that to you. We desperately need it. Policing and punishing is not the answer. Eugene needs to lobby the state for a restoration of welfare. Our wonderful representative, Peter DeFazio, knows more about Social Security and SSI than anyone else in America. And we need to send him back to do a good job. The rain has started. It is a cruel way to live without shelter. In this last month, I have met four women in wheelchairs and one man who are homeless. Only one of them's been allowed in the mission. The others are outside tonight. I volunteer at First Christian Church, helping homeless a couple of times a week. And I worked for five years as a welfare social worker in Oakland, California. And we had no homelessness then, until Reagan ended welfare. We need to do what we can. I hope you will lobby the state to make things better for homeless people. I think the city needs to do that. You need to lobby our good friend, Peter DeFazio, and support him and see that he can do more on Social Security and SSI. Thank you.
Thank you. David Igle, followed by Nicholas Knight.
I'm David Igle, Ward One. The president of the University of Oregon, Michael Schell, has been promoting a fantasy story about the history of generations of the people of Oregon. Sadly, because this preposterous hoax originates with the university as taken seriously. According to Mr. Schell, tens of thousands of violent white supremacists roamed Oregon in the 1920s. And in 1962, the University of Oregon chose to honor Frederick Dunn, a leader of this organization, Fraternal Order KKK, by naming a building in his honor. Mr. Schell would have the public believe that the U of O and Oregon in 1962 were a bastion of anti-Catholic religious and anti-black racial bigotry. Mr. Schell would have us believe that men such as Phil Knight, Bill Mauerman, Len Casanova, and Arthur Fleming would have tolerated such nonsense. My June 2017, 53-page report at reildunn.blog, reildunn.blog, documents the actual history. The story of the Fraternal Order KKK of the 1920s is essentially a story about dries versus wets, not about whites versus blacks. Klan chapters played baseball games against black teams. They advertise that they purchased Christmas gifts for needy black children. The story is complicated because those who were marketing the fraternal order were money-motivated crooks. Mr. Schell has been using his false history to support his campus politics agenda. Mr. Schell, by placing Councilman Evans on his renaming committee, created the illusion that the city of Eugene had supported the denaming. The city of Eugene did no research and took no position on the denaming and renaming. At a minimum, the city council needs to publicly make this point clear. It would be appropriate for Councilman Evans to lead the way in this matter. Mr. Schell promptly used Councilman Evans' image to promote this whole activity. Months ago, I offered a $25,000 prize to any regular faculty member of the U of O History Department who can successfully defend Mr. Schell's discredited Dunn report. No one, including Marsha Weisiger, one of the report's authors, has stepped forward to attempt to claim the money. I urge the council to promptly make a formal statement disassociating the council of the denaming of Dunn, all of which they did no research and took no position. I will furnish additional information. Thank you for your consideration of this matter.
Thank you. Next is Nicholas Knight, followed by John Thielking.
Hi there. My name is Nicholas Knight. I'm from Eugene in Ward Eight, I believe. I'm going to speak just a tiny bit on the downtown smoking ban. I was not here, or I was busy, unfortunately, last meeting, so I could not speak up then after it was announced and took rough effect in the area, even though, to my knowledge, it's not going into effect until a little bit later. But I could be wrong about that. I just want to speak on how it is frustrating, as a person who is a minimum-wage worker, to consistently be kind of the brunt of the city's distaste, we'll say, for homeless people and the policies that they do to push that sort of policy action on them. Recently, we had the dog ban downtown, in which a rather pointed effort was made to keep people who had dogs. And it had some details to what exceptions there were, but generally, people who have dogs points to the homeless, houseless people that we have downtown. And then continuing that with the smoking ban, which, to me, seems more of a pointed policy matter to say, "Your kind here is not what we want." And beyond just people who are houseless and homeless, this also affects places where I work downtown, where we have some 300, 400-odd employees who find out very suddenly that their smoking area where they go to smoke during their smoke breaks is suddenly not available to them and not by any means that our business itself can face. It is determined by the landlord of the space that we're on. So these policies, not only affecting homeless people in a kind of underhanded public policy way to say, "Not here, not in this space. We want this for growth, and you discourage growth," instead saying, not only, or not instead, using that and then also hurting people who are minimum-wage workers who need to, in some cases, go out to have a smoke break to alleviate the stress from their jobs or just because it's something that they are familiar with. Lastly, I just want to say, in most of the reporting that I've seen of this policy, it was framed as a gentle nudge for people to maybe quit smoking. And I cannot think of a more distasteful way for the city to say, "Hey, by the way, you should stop smoking. And to do this, we're going to make it so it's fine and it's on you, penalty of law, for you to give this up." By the way, that's our recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we have our next speaker, I want to remind everyone in the audience, yes, that you can do this for comments that wish you approve, but otherwise, we keep this space quiet and respectful. So thank you very much for respecting everyone who speaks. John Thielking next, followed by Justin McDonald.
Hello. My name is John Thielking. I'm in Emily's, Ward One. The recent article in the Register Guard that claims that the Assistant Attorney, City Attorney for Eugene, said that the Ninth Circuit decision overturning Boise's Idaho sleeping ban does not apply to Eugene is an important wake-up call that says the city of Eugene must be held to account for abusing the unhoused in violation of the U.S. Constitution's Eighth Amendment ban on cruel and unusual punishment. Please instruct your police department to not enforce the camping ban and the criminal trespass, one and two, on public property that are currently being used to unconstitutionally harass the unhoused. And as far as solutions go, I'm still working on that. We have couchtossing.org, which is still in the launch phase to try to get places to crash for free in people's houses. I really see no reason why people can't step up to the plate and help out with that. I mean, for instance, after 9/11, when the planes were ported land in Canada, there was one little town that had something like 7,000 people, extra people, come in and sleep on people's couches for a few weeks while they sorted out what to do with the airplanes. So there really is no reason why people, there really should be no reason why there should be any kind of housing shortage for homeless people to sleep in a spare room or on someone's couch. And then as far as the specific programs in Couch Tossing go, I do have two programs. One is you can sell my art cards on the street for $5. You can get those free, first 20 are free, at the yard sales that I have at my house starting October 5th, after I get back from my vacation. And also, there's Paid the Blog, where you get paid $0.50 per reply that gets sent to the P.O. box to try to get around the NSA snooping of people's replies. Thank you.
Thank you. Justin McDonald, followed by Phoenix Downer.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Justin McDonald, and I've had the pleasure to live in Ward Three for nearly five years now. I've come to speak to you on an issue that has been a problem for me, many of my peers, and to what I perceive the community at large for most of my time being a resident in Eugene. In just the past six months, the homeless, vagrant, and transient problem and associated public safety issues have been at near-crisis level. I've had to call the police five times to report individuals screaming at all hours of the day, sometimes threatening passerbyers, brandishing objects, everything from a shovel and other unconventional weapons to even knives. In a recent report I made, I watched as an angered individual who was living on my street for a week smashed the window of my neighbor with seemingly little instigation from him. And I proceeded to hear death threats as the police arrived. But I don't even get to get relief from my workplace. My coworkers and I are often exposed to this unfortunate reality, where we routinely have to kick out individuals making racial slurs, accosting women, and having to kick out individuals out of the restroom and proceed to clean up the blood from individuals shooting up. Several of my coworkers experience constant anxiety because of this, and it is a very unfortunate situation, which I sympathize with them. Even worse is an anonymous associate who I've got to know over the years, who will rename Anonymous for obvious reasons, has even moved her business because she doesn't feel safe walking home at night to her car. The project for public spaces from my research, a New York-based firm that the city of Eugene hired, had offered suggestions on how to make the downtown space a little bit more livable, welcoming, and safe. And they use words like "dirty," "unsafe," and "dangerous" to describe downtown Eugene. In 2014 to 2017, calls for police assistance had risen 46%. And I say all this not because I have disdain for homelessness. I grew up in an area where it was quite rampant, Los Angeles. I say this because it's become an issue for me and those I care about. I say this also in support of institutions that help the homeless. I believe there is more housing that's needed, more welfare programs that are needed. However, to a gentleman who just spoke, I think there could be a little bit more intelligence used when deciding where to place these centers, including the Whitebird Clinic, which I happen to live close to. Oftentimes, there are people spilling over, seeking help, and they often go into neighbors' yards and in late hours of the night complaining that they can't get in and cause other issues. So I encourage the city to not only contact me or at least email me some information with the information I've provided, but just get in contact with me with what can be done, what's being done, and in any ways, I or other individuals can help the city at large. Because I do believe Eugene is an amazing city and has even more potential. Thank you.
Thank you. Phoenix Downer, followed by Gwendolyn Iris.
Hello. My name is Phoenix Downer. I'm currently residing in Springfield, Oregon. And at one point in 2009 until 2012, I was off and on homeless in Eugene, Oregon. And I feel like I can see the perspective of both sides of the issues. In regards to camping around the sidewalks downtown and stuff, there are issues of impeding movement. And also, whether someone is actually sleeping or whether you should call an ambulance for them, there's that issue as well. But on the other flip side, as far as like providing fines and stuff, that's just contributing to their problem. They don't have any assets. They don't have property. They presumably may even have debts. So they already have a negative network at worth in a society that is based on materialism. And so adding fines in addition to that just does not help their situation any further than it already is. But one thing that perplexes me the most is the frequency in which people want to work against a problem instead of with a problem. We've got a lot of people here camping on the streets that are already camping and ready to go camping, and we're an area of arts and outdoors. And so it would think that at some point, we could possibly open up primitive campsites with basic trash services, the ground tampered levels, so their campsites can be set up, maybe even fences not to segregate them, but for their own privacy as well. That is definitely, I'm not under the delusion that this is a fix-all for any kind of homeless issues. And I also want to make the distinction between homelessness and, you know, disorderly conduct. But that is my opinion on this matter, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Gwendolyn Iris, followed by Janet Zoll.
Hi. My name is Gwendolyn Iris. I live in Springfield, but I run my business out of Eugene. And I'm really excited to be here because with the recent decision of the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals around criminalizing homelessness if there is no access to shelter, I'm really interested to see what kind of changes Eugene is going to make in its policy around public camping. I am especially interested in defining what accessible shelter means, according to us as a community. If addiction, mental illness, PTSD, physical disability create barriers to shelter, can it actually be considered that they have access to shelter? And when a significant portion of the population experiencing homelessness has a history of the aforementioned conditions, is it, it is our responsibility as a human rights city to define accessible shelter accordingly? While I'm hopeful to see Eugene and Lane County at large come into compliance with this recent decision, I still think we have a long ways to go. And I'm on board for being there every step of the way.
Thank you. Janet Zoll, followed by Michael Weed.
Good evening. My name's Janet Zoll, and I've been a resident of Ward Seven for 18 years. And in those 18 years, I've been an advocate for the homeless. I've worked extensively at the dinner sites, providing a mobile food service to the camps, the unauthorized camps and the sanctioned camps. And so when I heard the decision of the Ninth Circuit Court, I was really excited that things might change in Eugene. And then I was really as easily disappointed when I heard that the city feels that they are not out of compliance with that ruling. I have a dear friend that I've known for about six years, who is currently serving time, a 21-day jail sentence, simply for sleeping. And I think that is really criminal. He's done nothing wrong. He's an upstanding, honest citizen. He just does not have a place to live. And I see more and more of that. When I first moved into my home in Ward Seven, I never saw a homeless person in the River Road area. And now I see them all along River Road, behind Fred Meyer, or all around the shopping centers. It's gotten, the problem has gotten out of hand, and we don't seem to be doing anything as a city, as a community, to make things better. And I just urge you all to look at whether we really are in compliance with the Ninth Circuit Court ruling. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Weed, followed by Kathy Walker.
Okay. Well, thank you all for having me here today, councilors and Mayor Venice, as well as everybody here today. My name is Michael Weed, as stated here. I have lived in Lane County and currently live in Ward Four with Jennifer Yeah. I've lived in other wards here since 2010. I've been a student off and on since 2012. Recently graduated from Lane Community College. So one thing, I'm here today because of the homeless issue and this decision, not just the decision that happened in Iowa, but what I read today in the Register Guard as far as the official public stance of this council and the city, stating that they didn't feel this applied directly to the city of Eugene and the way that the laws are written, while Springfield did acknowledge that they were going to at least look into it. So during the most recent point in time count that took place here in Lane County, over 1,625 individuals stayed at the Eagle Warming Centers over the winter months, which means that they were sleeping up to that point in time and degrees that were 33 degrees or above. There were over 1,642 people experiencing unhouseness in Eugene and Lane County. 2,315 individuals, unique individuals, stayed at the Eugene Mission last year. 547 of those individuals had mental health issues, as reported by that count. Yet, the Eugene Mission, which is the primary source of housing for unhoused people in this community, and if you reach the Register Guard, is the solution for all unhouseness in this county, only has between 350 and 400 beds. Okay? With all the other additional camping programs, Conestoga Huts, additional shelters that are out there, just by the quick little numbers I've thrown together, we still are short about 1,000 beds in this county. So to me, right there, that states it doesn't matter about all these other things. We are directly, every single day, in violation of that ruling because we don't have access, because we don't have the beds. We do have individuals that have concerns about the things going on in the community downtown that are viable, about people are scared. Yes, I do value those 80-year-old folks that are scared about their businesses and their livelihoods. But I also know a 60-year-old woman that lives in Alt Baker Park that's worried about being stabbed every single night. All right? I challenge all y'all, if you really want to know what's going on, come sleep outside with some folks. Because I spent most of my time in this county, living on the streets, and I put myself through college. I was the student body president of Lane Community College. I'm starting U of O in the fall. So don't you ever dare give up on every single person in this community. Because we'll surprise you, and we're going to rise up. And I promise you, I hope you're on the right side on this one. Thank you.
Please. Please respect the rule. Thank you. We like to hear from everyone. Next up, Kathy Walker, followed by Todd Boyle.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I haven't spoken here for a couple of years, and I've only spoken here once. That was when I lost a friend, and his mother asked me to come speak with you. They were homeless. Tonight, I'm here to once again ask you guys to suspend, if not abolish, the camping ban, even if your legal department feels it doesn't violate our unhoused neighbors' civil and human rights. The results of this ban have been devastating. Your spokesman tells the public that we have more resources for our folks than Boise does, but fails to mention that our county's homeless population is damn near that of the entire state of Idaho. So when they're talking about those numbers, that's what they're trying to compare us to, a whole state in this county. I get to see the results of your camping ban. I get to see the results of the parks people taking and not posting. There's no more 24-hour posts. They're just coming and taking property. And I go down, I take these people down to get it back, they're lucky to get half of it back and nothing that was of any value, sentimental or otherwise. I had a whole clean camp taken the day before yesterday. Guess who pays for that? These guys out here. Not you, although some of you have done wonders in trying to step up with this. There's still some of you that just couldn't care less, and that's hurting all of us. I think you guys really need to consider, what's more important here? Your transportation bill for 2035 or the people that aren't going to make it that far? I was out there, too. Do I look like one of those people? I was one of those people. Just because you have never been one of those people doesn't mean you have the right to tell us what we can or can't be because of your laws that make survival illegal. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd Boyle, followed by Joshua Michael Frank.
Managing a city. What did you have, what was I thinking? So anyway, I noticed that in May, the city council asked the city to go out and do this Housing Tools and Strategies Project to rationalize a number of really important factors, like whether you're going to levy a construction excise tax, how you're going to liberalize accessory dwelling units, how much urban land resources we have. to liberalize accessory dwelling units, how much urban land resources we have to be developed and so forth. And to my mind, this is the most important actual thing underway now for the homeless, but especially for the bottom 10% income decile. And the first meeting, I understand, is Wednesday at the Baker Center, and that's going to be real important for people interested in low-income housing. And I'm going to keep saying low-income housing instead of affordable housing, because the, the main point I'm trying to get across tonight is that you should focus public resources on the bottom 10% who need it most first, and then after they're taken care of, then you can allow expenditures and subsidies and tax credits for the second and third and fourth deciles. It's, you know, in other words, people who are at the 30 and 40% of the, what is it, average income, whatever it is. The idea of affordable housing is promoted by the ALIS study, the American Community Surveys, and the United Way has about a third of the county, you know, up to half the county, 42%, 44%. And you're not going to be able to subsidize housing for 44% of the, and they don't need it. The Register Guard article last week featured a family that had a $60,000 income. This is not a target of subsidy first. Everybody needs housing, okay, but let's start with the bottom 10%. There is no data, really data collection or management for the, for keeping track of these levels by decile. So that's what you should actively request and, and maintain your information infrastructure around deciles in order to have a moratorium on all credits and subsidies for the second and third and fourth deciles, like what's gushing out for the Fifth Street Market project in the, in the, I'm talking about Mupte and all these sorts of things, millions of dollars of tax exemptions, and those should all be moratoriumed. And instead, you should increase supply at the bottom. I've got 50 seconds here. By allowing ADUs, as intended by the legislature, there's 44,000 lots in Eugene, and since the restrictions were tightened up in 2014, there has only been two per year who have gotten permits for ADUs, accessory dwelling units, and you are more likely to die of whooping cough. I looked it up. It's five for 100,000. So you should allow ADUs and by removing the restrictions, and also you should allow partitioning of lots. The lots are too big. If you're going to allow ADUs, then why not have the person in the back half of the lot own that back half of the lot? Don't we want to have an owner occupied scenario? That's what the Neighborhood Association is asking that we should have owner occupied, and we're going to have owners? So let's just encourage people to partition their lots from 6,000 down to 3,000 square feet. Enough of that.
Thank you. Joshua Michael Frank. Joshua Michael Frank, he's still here? No. Daniel Delay. Daniel Delay? No. Okay, Ken Newbeck, I know you're here, followed by Tracy Jocelyn.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members and, and city staff. My name is Ken Newbeck. I live at 20th Monroe Street in Emily Semple's Ward. And I'm here tonight to express my disappointment and my dismay with the response of the city of Eugene to the Ninth Circuit Court decision with regard to the rights of people who are homeless. The city's attorney, the city attorney's office and Eugene Police Department and statements they've made to the press and other media seem to have dismissed the Circuit Court's decision as not being relevant or at all useful with regard to what's going on in Eugene. And I think part of the problem is fixation with, with technicalities and legal pieces and so forth, but failure to see the intent and the spirit behind that decision. And the intent and the spirit behind that decision was basically, basically to say that it's wrong, it's immoral. The UN would say it's a human rights violation, to punish people who are homeless for engaging in behaviors that they must engage in in public because they have no shelter or homes to engage in behaviors like this. So sleep, resting, and so forth are things that people are being, being punished for here in Eugene. And we seem to be fixated in the city on framing things as if they were mere violations, and if they're violations, we're unwilling to use the term criminalization to talk about them. It's not a crime to be homeless, Eugene. I've heard that said. The last mayor said that. That's not the point. What we're doing to people through citations and fines is punishing them. That's exactly what the court decision says is wrong. Okay? We're punishing people. We're taking people who have no money, who may have no incomes, and we're asking them to pay fines. Now, for people like ourselves, $140 or whatever the fine may be for a camping violation may not seem like a whole lot. We can probably dig deeply in behind our couch cushions and on our dressers and ask our partners and come up with that money and take care of the problem. But if you're living out on the streets, you don't have that money. Otherwise, we won't be spending a couple of nights in a, in an inexpensive motel to keep warm if you had $140. Failure to pay these fines can lead to warrants for your arrests. So now the criminalization really starts up, but it's additional punishment.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm out of condition here.
If you watch the lights, you'll get a yellow light when you're getting close, and you can see it when you're speaking, and a red light when you're done. And so we have Tracy Jocelyn next, followed by Eric Jackson.
My name is Tracy Jocelyn. I reside in Betty Taylor's Ward. Not real organized, but I'm going to do my best here. I'm co-manager of Nightingale Hostage Shelters Rest Stop. We're located at 34th and Hillier. We're doing awesome. We're continuing to prove that rest stops work. There's 11 of us. Three people are retired. One of those people got SSI recently. Two people are working and going to school for the first time. Another guy's working. Nathan and I work. So we're kind of the working rest stop. All right. Rest stops aren't the solution. Winter's coming. We're all pretty tough. I get a little fussy sometimes for a little small studio. I'll take studio, but we're doing great at the rest stop. I'm a Eugene resident, 35 years, and my eyes are wide open, and I've been bearing witness all this time. Haven't stayed red up as I have for, what, 34 years? The Ninth Circuit passing the appeal that says you cannot violate the Eighth Amendment to the Constitution, which includes cruel and unusual punishment. Pretty exciting. That's why we did sleeps, safe, legal, entitled, emergency places to sleep. I've always felt like we need a place for people to go. I heard that every country, based on population, has at least a campfire at the edge of town. Running a rest stop? We can't handle people that have high needs, so there needs to be a rest stop for people struggling with addiction with more help. There just needs to be places for people to go. I think the community members getting upset with behaviors, as I heard on a portion of the city club, it's going to lead to, let's put people somewhere and give them a place to be human. Starting tomorrow, I heard it's illegal to sleep in your car in Springfield. Did I mention I've been homeless 10 years? I lived in my car, tried to live with friends, now I run the rest stop, so I'm very lucky. I see grandmas, it breaks my heart around the Mission, grandmas that can't get into the Mission. We all love the Mission, it can't do everything. Nobody can solve this enormous human rights issue themselves. The ultimate dream is for Eugene residents to be proud that we care for each community resident. And I know there's tons of people working hard, and we just got to keep working.
Thank you. Eric Jackson, followed by Patrick. No last name.
Mayor Vennas, Council. Thank you. A couple of you did get an email that I sent in regards to this when I got my ticket first thing Friday morning, because I chose not to sleep at camp, and I chose to sleep on the streets with the kids to see what the result would be of the Ninth Circuit Court decision. Wednesday morning, when I opened my email by mistake at 8:00 AM, because Christina, one of the other people that has come with me multiple times with a little dog, was in jail, so I had to hang out in the city instead of go back to where I camp. So because of that, I happened to be around internet, and I got all the emails and a flood of them, and I read that decision, word for word. And I was thrilled. It was probably the best day of my life, and I've done a lot that are best days of my lives, and this was above and beyond all of them. And it's because logic and heart was being used, because somebody wanted a pathway to heaven, not stupidity and war. And I loved that the decision came out. I totally understand, and I agree. And I can't say anything other than I agree that there is absolutely a loophole in what was written in the decision. The fact of the matter is, because Eugene just is a violation area, and the ticket that I have here in my hand is just a camping violation, they technically don't arrest for that violation. Though the back of the ticket clearly says I can be arrested or have my driving license suspended. So I don't know what that exactly means when they say, "We don't arrest," but I've talked to all the powers that be in the police department, and they don't issue warrants for arrest for this. But the other 50% of the tickets are criminal trespass, too, and every single one of my friends on the streets has been woken up. Trespass two ticket that I came in and talked to you guys about, dismissed. Why? Because it's not reasonable to give a person a criminal trespass ticket from a letter that's on file. So anytime that the prosecutor's going to have somebody that can fight it like me, they're going to dismiss it because they don't want it fought in a courtroom. So my advice to all the kids now is take it to the mats and tie up the court system, but that's a waste of time and money. How about stop issuing unconstitutional tickets? I emailed everybody the Boise, Idaho cases. It's common sense that a letter does not empower a police officer to act as an agent for the property. You guys, we need to rethink this. It's, it's a big one, and you guys can make a decision for the nation. Cruel and unusual starts the second somebody nudged my foot. That they don't have to be rude when they wake up. I asked, "What would you do if I got in your bedroom?" "Oh, that'd be different." This is their bedroom.
Thank you. Next up is Patrick. Don't have a last name. Okay? That's, okay. Got it. Patrick, followed by Crystal White.
As a disabled American veteran and street elder, I will tell you that we are moving forward with the paradigm regardless of your decision here. I have the backing of most of the street families. No. Wait. We are a collection of individuals who have formulated a team of enormous proportions and beautiful colors. That is what the Grand Canyon was described to me as. I caution you to do this. Think before you act. We are willing and we are able. I have personally talked with a man named Christian Fox, a realtor that owns the building that houses Beth's Supply and Killer Burger, and he said to me, "I want to find a place for you to go," meaning the family members who are otherwise not housed or don't have the financial means that I do, would be, I make $50,000 a year. I take British accent only to let you know that, hey, it's like this. I'm from Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, and I'm going to look all of you in the eyes. I'm going to do what I say and say what I do. And right now, I'll tell you that I have behind me an army that will crush you and take your jobs away from you should you decide to counter us. We have the momentum, and it is not nationwide, it is international. So join us in the 21st century and become a person that instituted the new paradigm, where one person or the other person cannot be identified as less than and then spun or treated like a Jew during the Holocaust. It's embarrassing for me to be part of this community where the VA system cannot even send me to a place when I obviously need to be taken into the hospital because I'm going to hurt myself or somebody else. They can only send me to Peace Health, where they will treat me like a person that is uncompliant with their medication, and I have brought police officers with me to protect me from the handlers at Peace Health, only to come out and go, "I can't believe this." After spending 21 days in Oregon State Hospital, I found out that, yes, I am willing to do what you want me to do when you are willing to listen to what I say. And right now, I say, "Good day!"
Thank you. Crystal White? Crystal White? No? Alex? I'm, hang on, are you Crystal White?
Well, my name was called earlier.
Oh, okay, what's your name?
My name is Daniel Delay.
Daniel Delay, all right. Go for it, Daniel.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen of the city of Eugene, I come to you today in regards to the homeless epidemic, is what I'm trying to speak on behalf of. You walk around Eugene, you walk around Portland, you walk around any city really, and you see a bunch of signs for no trespassing, no skateboarding, no sitting, no camping, no loitering, no smoking. No. No, 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 no. And with an increasing number of homelessness, I mean, on a daily basis, people are made homeless, and where are we supposed to go? You know, where, where are you supposed to, to be if you can't be anywhere? Being homeless is already basically made illegal, and I don't know. The police are thugs. They're gangsters. They, I mean, if anybody, if you saw me or dreadlocks, you know, coming up on you at the grocery store or something, reaching on a nine-millimeter Glock, "Can I see your ID, miss?" You know, it's kind of threatening, intimidating, and unnecessary. People have a lot of bad experiences of them beating them up, falsely charging them, and, you know, just sitting there and jail the rot. So I feel like the homeless community needs to be left alone and more or less to govern itself, because the tyrannical oppression of the police and the government and all these laws that say no, no. I feel like we're missing the point. I feel like we're perpetuating the problem and not really trying for any solutions, you know? I've been looking for work, you know, since, I don't know, I, I'm, I've been road tripping. We only settled in Eugene recently, but work needs to be more available, you know? Resources need to be more or less reached out, you know, because when you don't know what you're doing or where you're going, the, I don't know, the reach out for, for what you really need is not going to be there. People don't really know what would help them, and I feel like, well, I know, I've read about studies and research that say having a home is a good remedy for most mental illnesses, you know? You have a base camp. You can't have the base camps out here because the cops are going to take it, and they're going to throw it away, and you're going to have to start over again, so then you're homeless with nothing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So now we are, no Crystal White, so we're at Alex Reziz? Reniz? Alex? Right, I can't quite read this. Good. R-E-I-T, oh, thank you, R-E-I-T-Z. R-E-I-T, oh, thank you, R-E-I-T-Z. Rights. And you'll be followed by Jerry Glass.
I'd have to ask you, when the laws are basically set in opposition based on the architecture of the place, the signage, the actual placement of the plants, the placement of the bike racks, the actual state laws superseding them, wherein is one supposed to stand and exist in downtown? I would ask you precisely, because the cops don't actually know. I've talked to them, they've said as much, they don't have a clue what you're up to. And neither do I, to be perfectly honest. I'm really wondering because there is tons of land in this city and it is unoccupied. I've seen buildings downtown unoccupied for the entire year I've been here. You say there's no space and yet with climbing rates and people getting displaced every day by greedy relatives trying to take advantage of the actual price boom coming in here, what's really going on? I mean, really? How much of your housing values climbed? How much is the land worth now? About the same as the American dollar? Nothing. The fact is, the solution comes with people. It always boils down to people, whether or not they're willing to work in cohesion toward a common end. You got seven out of 10 people out here willing to work toward an environmental restoration effort or a communal restoration effort out here that you do nothing with on a daily basis. On the contrary, 50% of the time that these people are being stolen from, it's from your city workers, your road patrols, your police. It's not the tweakers. And the people around the White Bird have my sincerest condolences because I know a lot of the people that hang around there and their animals. But they don't represent the greater majority of us, a lot of whom have many problems. PTSD, which is perpetuated by beating, rape, theft and everything we have to go through on a daily basis. I would implore you to walk a mile in my shoes, but that would require you carrying around 60 pounds a day for an entire year straight on the mend before you started this walk and have to break your back. Now, what are you really doing here by not adhering to this federal statute? Really? A true measure of justice is weighed with compassion and evidence. And if each of you can't look at each other, look at yourselves and say you've done that, then what are you really doing? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jeremy, Jerry Glass, and you are our final speaker.
Okay. Did you tell me what? I mean, I don't start my time.
Go ahead, Jerry, and I'll come back to her.
Okay. Well, for one, that I hear like all these problems that like happening homelessness, I mean, besides being homeless, like dementia, all this violence, alcoholism and drug abuse, that is not a poor person's problem. You know what that is? It's a human condition. You rich people don't know anybody that has all these conditions, mental illness? Are you kidding me? I mean, seriously. So let's start with the smoking ban. Now, this here, are you gonna say that it's the right, like, the people like smoke? That it's gonna help your health or whatever? God damn it, there's cars that go all over the place. We should send this guy named Officer Peckles, who's your pit bull against the homeless people, going after there and saying that you guys gotta have, the rich people gotta have like the most sophisticated things that are like, like, get rid of things that cause shit to the environment. Really? If you wanna get money for the city, those are the people I go after, not me? You know, I'm a college educated person. And, you know, I like ran, little bit of like, my luck ran dry. You know what I'm saying? And you make it impossible for somebody to try to get back up on his feet. You can't charge your phone anywhere. They cut, they cut, they cut everything off of the parks. Right over here, I tried to charge my phone today. I couldn't do it. How am I gonna get a job? Can't ride on the city bus because I'm trying to like bottle and can to where I can like make a living, to where I can like, like, bring myself up. And all you people over there, you think that you guys are like, 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 gonna be helping everybody? Let me tell you what's really happening. Now, all you guys might think that you're losing jobs to like what Donald Trump says is Mexico and Canada, sure, you're losing a few jobs. But what it is, is automation. Automation is losing your jobs right now. You guys have family? I tell you what, at least one of you people have a family member that, son, daughter, you guys just can't support, they're just not smart enough to like, like, work within the economy? You know what? They're the first to go. Automation is taking people's jobs. And I'm telling you right now, and I see the future, that you guys are gonna know somebody that's gonna take them down. And if you don't help us now, I mean, what are you gonna do? You can't kill us all. I'm, give me as many tickets as you want. Give me a million dollar ticket right now, I don't care. I'm not gonna pay it. Like I said, go out to rich, the rich people that are like causing the real problems with the environment? You tell the people are like wrecking the land? Oh, go after, go after Superior Steel, I work for them. You know what I mean? The real, the real problem is what's gonna happen in the future. And if you think that we could be marginalized right now, you can declare war on the poor, but guess what? You're next. Have a good day.
Thank you. And then, what is your name?
Nicole St. Germain.
Oh, did I call you earlier? Did you sign up? I don't think, did you-
I signed her up.
Oh, you did? I don't have a sheet. Do we have her signed up? You know, there's a process for this and you sign up and you fill out a sheet, so you're welcome to come back for the next public forum, but we're, we've now gone through-
Yeah, I was signed up.
All right. You know, go, go ahead, speak.
Thank you. All right, well, my name is Nicole St. Germain and I come to you, human citizens of Earth, searching for a glimmer of humility in your eyes because we're all humans here. We all love our beds and a warm cup of coffee in the morning. And when you're denied something like being able to sleep, you don't enjoy that coffee, you, you know, end up getting imprisoned for a basic human right, to sleep, should be. And we wonder, where is this going to lead? If you can't see past the dirt on our faces, what is anything worth? Just because we're not using as much water as you are, you know, we're not making as much trash, we're picking up after ourselves, you know? We're fostering a community of kindness while we have nothing. It's a little bit harder than it sounds, but it's a beautiful community that's taking care of each other and working out. And there are a lot of great services out there for the homeless. But when you start treating us like dirt, like dogs, like we don't deserve to breathe, we don't deserve to sleep, then where are you gonna be next week? What if you're out of a job next week? I didn't, I didn't choose to be homeless. My housing situations kept dropping me. So does that make me a criminal because of my credit score? You know, does that make me a criminal because my pets aren't allowed to be inside? So it's fine, I'll sleep outside with my animals because I love them, because of kindness and care for another being, another kind other than myself, other than a dollar amount, other than maybe like, oh, I just, I just don't wanna look at you, you know? Could you, could you imagine someone just not wanting to see you because you're unsightly? It's a little bit more than just, oh, you don't want me here. Okay, I, I'm not even allowed to exist anywhere. Okay, so I personally live in my car, but I'll be sleeping outside in hopes that this does not happen with a lot of other people, I'm sure. And I say this again because you're all so human and karma and dharma exist, or whatever religion, I don't mean to bring religion into this, but just some kind of kindness, humility for your fellow human rather than just some piece of paper or some kind of number that won't even matter in five years. But it will matter for the people, each individual.
Thank you. Thank you all for speaking. Thank you for being quiet. No, please, we're closing the public forum, so that, this is finished. Are there councilors who wish to make any comments on testimony they've heard? Counselor Semple.
Thank you. As always, I appreciate everyone coming and all your valuable input. I want you to know that we do see you. We might not be doing things the way you want, we might not be doing things the way I want, but I do see you and I thank you for coming. I think that the Boise decision does affect us, although there's the loophole that we don't arrest, we're still criminalizing people. Getting a citation means you did something that was against the law. It does lead to an arrestable offense if you don't pay it and you can't pay it. I think that it's not what I used to ask for, which is lift the camping ban, because that doesn't make sense to just citywide, you can sleep anywhere. It's too much chaos and I don't think that's what you really want. But what I want and what I think we need and what I think is the humane thing is to provide a place where people can legally lie down and go to sleep. We don't have that. People are sleeping on the sidewalks. And I ask them, "Why are you sleeping downtown where you know that you will be woken up and told to move when there's other places that are more out of sight?" People are sleeping downtown because they feel safe there, even though they're going to be woken up. It's time for us to provide a safe place for people to lie down and sleep. Just because Boise doesn't fit us exactly doesn't mean that we shouldn't change. Now, at the same time, I'm also hearing from a lot of people in neighborhoods outside the downtown core where the problems are increasing. And I am not putting this on the people sleeping on the sidewalk. The other thing we need desperately is more addiction treatment. All of my complaints include needles and usually excrement. We've gotta provide places for people to be because it's, it's reaching out to all our neighborhoods and it's affecting all of us. So many people are writing and saying, "I don't feel safe." And so many people on the sidewalk are saying, "I don't feel safe." This town, this city, we need to be safe for everyone. It's time. Come on. We have some empty land, we can get some porta-potties and a trash can and, you know, some basic, basic things. Why don't we have a place for people to shower and do their laundry? No wonder they smell bad and we don't wanna be around them. It's time for us to help our neighbors and it's time for us to help our people who don't have houses.
Thank you. Any other comments from councilors? All right, that closes the public forum. Thank you all very much for coming and testifying. It was helpful to hear your insights and we will now move on to the next item of business, which is our consent calendar.
Who approved the items on the consent calendar?
Second.
All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. All right, that is approved. Thank you. Okay, our next item is a public hearing. I'm opening, I guess I'll get to open the public hearing on a proposed ordinance changing the street name of the undeveloped portion of Suzanne Way north of Crescent Avenue to Tennyson Avenue. Those wishing to speak during this public hearing should have already submitted a completed request to speak form to the information desk. And it looks like we have a few.
One.
We have one. Do any councilors need to disclose any biased conflicts of interest, ex parte communications or abstentions pursuant to EC 9.70653? Mike, Counselor Clark.
I, just before the meeting, asked one of the people I think is going to testify whether she thought it was a good idea or not. I know Teresa from having worked so long in our neighborhood association around the area, so I guess that's ex parte communication. I still believe I can make a fair and impartial decision.
Excellent. Excellent. Before we proceed, let's see. Before we proceed, I want to state that anyone testifying has the right to address and rebut the substance of the ex parte communication just disclosed. That doesn't seem like a likely, likely outcome, but it's in my script. Have any staff received any challenges to a counselor's impartiality submitted pursuant to Eugene Code Section 9.70655? Guess I need a answer from staff on that. Have staff received any challenges?
No.
No? Okay, thank you. All right, City Manager, would you introduce the topic, please?
You bet. Who's gonna introduce the topic? Nick, run up here.
Tonight's public hearing is concerning a land use application for a street name change for the portion of Suzanne Way which extends north of Crescent Drive to Tennyson Avenue. The request was submitted by Living Strong LLC. And I should probably introduce myself, Nick Giogiallo, Associate Planner, Planning Department. The only testimony received to date was in support of the street name change. The Planning Commission held a public hearing and recommended approval on July 10th of this year. And you are scheduled to take action on this ordinance to change the street name on the upcoming September 24th meeting.
Thank you. Testimony presented at this public hearing should be directed toward the applicable approval criteria or other criteria that the speaker believes apply to the decision. The applicable approval criteria for this proposed street name change are from Eugene Code Section 9.8485, which states that, "The Planning Commission shall recommend and the City Council shall approve an application for a street name change upon determining that a proposed renaming is in the best interest of the city. The failure of anyone to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the City Council and parties an opportunity to respond will preclude appeal on that issue." The request to speak forms, they're not separated into groups because there's only one. And it looks like it's in support. Please give your name and address when you come to the podium to speak. You will have three minutes to comment. The timer and lights on the podium indicate the time you have to speak. A yellow light will come on when you have 15 seconds to complete your comments. The red light indicates the end of three minutes and our sole speaker is Teresa Bisho.
Thank you. I'm Teresa Bisho and I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Living Strong LLC and the Crescent Village Association. The applicant owns all of the vacant property on both sides of the section of Suzanne Way that's north of Tennyson Avenue. Counselor Clark asked me before the hearing, what is happening to Suzanne Arley's namesake, the section of Suzanne Way between Crescent Avenue and Chad Drive? That section will remain. It's not part of the proposal tonight. 'Tis better to have loved and lost than never to have loved at all. Many of you probably recall that quote from Alfred Lord Tennyson. He was a good man and it's a great street. We have before you a proposal that we believe will help motorists, bicyclists, pedestrians move around the neighborhood and not be as confused with the current situation where we anticipate drivers going, "Tennyson? Where is it?" We wanna pull them into the neighborhood off of Crescent Avenue as quickly as possible and also avoid a case where they're meandering along a bend and suddenly they're on a different street. So this will allow Tennyson, as it now exists, to curve, head south, connect with Crescent Avenue. The city has not yet approved the construction of the street. The actual street we're talking about is just now under construction and we hope your action by September 24th will allow the first street signs to ever be put up, to actually have the new name of Tennyson. So the Northeast Neighbors Board did vote unanimously in support of the change in name as well as we have strong support from the area businesses and residents on Tennyson Avenue to extend that grand name further. So that concludes my comments. A special thank you to the planning staff and Public Works for their time and attention to this matter. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that closes the public hearing. Yes.
Close the record?
Oh, and it also closes the record. Okay. Thank you.[1799.58] Oh, and it also closes the record. Okay, thank you. All right, now we're on to our next action, a resolution granting a Measure 49 claim and waiving a provision of Chapter Nine of the Eugene Code 1971 for property located adjacent to 70 West 24th Place, Eugene, Oregon, tax lot 2700.
I move to adopt a resolution granting a Measure 49 claim for property located adjacent to 70 West 24th Place, Eugene, Oregon.
Second.
Okay, have Alan in the queue? Anyone else wanna comment?
Are we having a presentation at all?
Oh, I guess we are. Sorry, Alan raised his hand, and I said yes, so excuse me. Please, let's have a presentation.
Hi, members of the council. My name is Dan Lawler, and I'm an Assistant Planner with City of Eugene Planning Division. This is Gabe Flock. He's a Senior Planner with the City of Eugene Planning. I'll just take a moment to introduce the topic and let you know how staff has handled this claim. Uh, so tonight's action item concerns a claim made under ballot Measure 49, which is a state provision that allows property owners to seek waiver of a regulation or compensation after a subsequently enacted regulation reduced the value of their home because it restricted the residential use, the desired residential use of his or her property. Uh, in particular, the regulation issued tonight is, was part of the Single Family Code Amendments passed in 2014, and what it does is it limits building size on alley access lots to 10% of total lot size or 800 square feet, whichever is smaller. In this case, the property owner desires to build a 1,200 square foot home, um, and before the regulations were enacted, R1's, uh, the R1 code would have allowed up to a 2,310 square foot home. Uh, now with the regulations in place, she can only build a 462 square foot home. So she seeks waiver of the land use regulation to be able to build that 1,200 square foot home. Uh, the last thing I'll say is that the record closed on July 27th, and without a motion to reopen the record, no materials submitted after that date can be considered. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So now I do have a queue of Alan, I have, uh, sorry, Counselors Lenka, Counselor Semple. Anyone else wanna be in this queue?
I do.
Okay, Counselor Clark. All right, Counselors Lenka, take it away.
Yeah, there's some, seems to be some confusion around this topic. In particular, uh, I think it stems from the particular passage of the, oh, the code that we're talking about, and this particular, uh, issue is not about ADUs, formerly known as SDUs. It is about an alley access, um, lot. And, uh, uh, City Attorney, you can read that section of the code, and I think that'll help illuminate what, uh, the, the problem is and the way that it's phrased. It seems like it's about ADUs when it's not.
Well, so, um, the piece that, there's a, there's, there's many documents in the record. Um, Attachment A that was, is in the record, which is an AIS, includes a summary of what happened in 2014. It was the AIS from Melissa Hansen back in 2014. And one of the things it describes is this action that, um, made it the 10% or 800 square feet, or whichever is less. And it, um, the way she summarizes it is, is limit the building size of secondary dwellings and dwellings on alley access lots to 10% of the total lot size, not to exceed 800 square feet. So it was, it was a similar action for both ADUs and, um, the alley access lots. It was basically making the alley access lots subject to similar restrictions as ADUs, um, and so that may be what's contributing to some of the confusion. But what we're, what we're speaking about here this evening, this subject lot is a, is a vacant lot, um, that is, um, not an, it's not an ADU. We're not talking about constructing an ADU this evening. It is a, it is to construct a single family residential house.
Maybe if you look at Attachment A, it's only accessible by the alley, so that makes it an alley access lot. It's actually the same size as the house right to the north, which actually is a single family residence house. Um, and so in 2014, in our city code amendments, we added this provision. Why did we add a provision that restricted the building of, uh, a size of buildings at the alley access lot? Do you guys know that history?
Um, well, I think the, the intent was to treat alley access lots as comparable to the way we were treating ADUs at the time. Um, and that was due to the fact that many alley access lots tend to be pretty small. Um, and I think what's contributed to the confusion here, as Catherine was saying, was that, um, you know, this isn't about an ADU. The, the claimant desires to build a primary, single-family dwelling, um, not an ADU, and so that's where we see the restriction in use. Um, you know, the, this section of code, it addresses, it's supposed to make it comparable to ADUs, but that's not what the claimant is trying to do here, not build an ADU. She wants to build a primary dwelling.
Right, they're not building a primary dwelling and an ADU. They're just building a primary dwelling, and before 2014, they could build it.
Correct, correct.
And, uh, and, and what they're requesting is to build a 1,200 square foot, not a large house, but a house on this lot. And, um, and what this code does is restrict their ability to do that.
That's, that's correct. Before the regulations were enacted in 2014, uh, the, the code allowed 50% of lot coverage as your allowable building size, um, in the R1 zone. So she could have built a 2,310 square foot home before the regulation was enacted. Regulation was enacted, and 10% of the lot size came out to 462 square feet. Um, you know, so where we see the restriction of use is, her desired residential use was to build a 1,200 square foot primary dwelling, single-family home. Now her use is restricted to only a 462 square foot home.
A tiny home. Um, and, and, uh, City Attorney, what, would, would this set a precedence in for other cases associated with Measure 49 and/or, um, ADUs or alley access lots?
Um, you know, consistency is always good, but it doesn't bind you in any way. What your decision would do this evening is, if you decided, if you chose to grant the Measure 49 waiver or deny the Measure 49 waiver, it wouldn't mean that the next Measure 49 decision that came in, you'd somehow be bound to that. You are allowed to change your, um, approach, and situat, factual situations are also different. You can look at the individual specs. So if you're asking if a decision in this case, one way or another, to grant or deny, would somehow mean that all the, all your future decisions would be bound by that, no, they, it wouldn't be.
So in, in this case, it seems to be, uh, almost, uh, we were, the original idea behind the 2014 amendment was to treat these smaller lots like an ADU and have those kind of restrictions, which makes sense, but this seems to be an unintended consequence of that language in that this lot is not a tiny lot, and it could easily accommodate a 1,200 square foot home as the, um, person wants to build. And, um, and if there, it does kind of cry out in my mind for an exemption from, or exception from this rule.
Okay, Counselor Semple.
Thank you. Um, I've looked at this pretty, pretty deeply, and I've talked to people about it. I think, uh, what we're looking at is a reasonable compromise. However, I've been asked by constituents to, um, look at this some more, and because there is some confusion, I don't see any harm in reopening the public record just briefly, so I have a motion I'd like to make. Do I do that now?
So there's a mo, as I, there's a motion and a second on the table, so you would move to substitute?
Okay.
Um, and the motion to substitute, then, if it passes, then we would vote on that as the motion on the table.
Thank you. Um, so I move to substitute for the current motion to reopen the record for the Measure 49 claim for additional written testimony until 5 o'clock PM Wednesday, September 12th, 2018, and the claimant's rebuttal period until 5 o'clock PM Wednesday, September 19th, 2018, and postpone counsel's vote to Monday, September 24th, 2018.
Second.
Okay, any discussion about this? Questions? All, you have a comment about this?
No, my comment was the other side.
Okay, all right. All in favor of the motion to substitute? One, two, three, four, five, six, okay? Opposed? Two. All right, so the motion passes, so...
So that is now the motion on the table, which is the motion to, so now you'll need to...
So now we're motion...
Now that's the main motion on the table.
Okay, now we're on the, and, and Mike would like, Counselor Clark would like to speak to it.
It's a process question for staff, I suppose, for the manager, I guess. Um, one of the things I noticed about this was that amongst, um, information we received directionally, as reference to the information about the case, seemed to be similar in the, in the wrap-up that we got in the AIS for this, that it was in its original presentation from the hearing. And it seemed to me that there was a considerable amount of testimony and information put forward, and I, I didn't see, I mean, I saw the reference to that being, um, uh, not, not fundamentally altering the staff's recommendation, but I, I really would have preferred, I think, to have a better analysis of the evidence that was presented, and why or why not it was meaningfully, um, applicable to our decision with this. I suppose I didn't have enough staff analysis for why, what was, we had quite a bit of information presented, and it didn't seem like we had a very thorough examination of that information from staff and then explanation why it did or did not apply. So I would like to see that done better in the future. Thank you.
Okay, are we ready to vote?
Nope.
Alan.
Two questions. One, the timeframe for this, uh, from the AIS, we either needed to prove or deny the claim no later than October 6th, so this fits within that context, within that deadline, sorry. And, um, and if we don't approve it by then, it's deemed approved. Is that the way Measure 49 works?
No, that's not the way Measure 49 works. Measure 49 is a challenging statute, and it has statements in there with not than an explanation of what the consequence may be. Um, we have 180 days to make a decision. That's what the statute says. Um, it's unlike, um, uh, some of the 120-day requirements where it's then deemed, uh, approved. It doesn't state that in there, but we will make sure that you make a decision within 180 days, so we don't make a law on that.
Totally.
We're gonna not wanna...
You'll comply without making a decision.
The second question's to Counselor Semple, and what, what, um, you, you seem very purposeful on this. What do you expect to get in terms of additional testimony and the nature of it in the next day and a half?
I was told by the people who would like to add to the record that they could do it within 12 hours, so I think two days is sufficient. I haven't heard from anyone else, but I do think it's important we look at this information. And I also don't think that it would harm anything. You know, we can go right on with what the vote would have been tonight with that information, and it doesn't affect the deadline. So I really don't see any harm, and I do think it's important to recognize our constituents' concerns.
Counselor Clark?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask the attorney, do you see any harm in us reopening the record to get additional information?
Um, no. I, I actually have a, have a much greater concern if, um, there was a desire to consider information that folks were hearing about that wasn't in the record. So I'd say, if you wanna hear and consider other stuff, open the record, let it in.
That's a wise course, too.
All right, excellent. Okay, so are we now ready to vote on this? All right, all in favor of reopening the record, uh, has moved? All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Okay, that passes. We are done. Thank you very much.